Welcome, everybody, to the first meeting of our summer session. So we're pretty excited to have everyone join us. And with that, Mr. Kirschner, could you please take role?
All board members are present.
Thank you. If everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item is our consent. May I have a motion on the table to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to throw out a little in discussion if I could, please.
Oh, please do.
Throw in.
We are approving the next principal of Mohawk Trails Elementary School. Mrs. Kate Fagan is with us. We want to give her a welcome introduction as a new principal to the administrative leadership team and to the new leadership at Mohawk Trails. I want to let the board know we're very excited to bring Kate from the assistant principal role at Orchard Park under the great leadership of Rhonda Turner. Rhonda, thanks for being here this evening as well. And just want to let the board know that the leadership profile that was put together from the feedback from the parents, from the teachers, from the support staff at Mohawk Trails, that Dr. Dudley and I put together, very indicative of the qualities that Kate brings to that principalship, and such a great match for the things that that building, the stakeholders are looking for, and we're very excited, I'm very excited recommending her for that post.
I just want you to know, it's all because of me.
You know, that is absolutely true.
That rumor.
And in the final interview, Kate informed me that that is absolutely 100% true. So thank you, Pam.
I hadn't retired. I moved to Orchard Park.
Never know with a domino.
I know.
Well, you know, since we are sort of discussing this, I do want to share at least thank you for the process that you used to identify the leader for Mohawk Trails. I know when we were vetting candidates for superintendent, we had a very thorough process. I wanted to be sure that we spoke with a number of different stakeholder groups to be sure we were identifying the best leader for our district. And you did a very similar approach for the principal. So with that, we really appreciate what you've done.
My pleasure. Thank you.
So, are we ready to take a vote? All in favor of supporting consent?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next on our agenda, we do have one action item, which is a little unusual for our meeting, but we wanted to be sure that we included the course waivers as an action, not a consent, in case there were any additional questions as we move forward with this. Course waivers, Amy.
Thank you. And at our last meeting, I did bring forth four different course waivers that we are applying for through IDOE. The one is Avid, so that we can count that as college credit rather than just basic skills credit. One is Interpersonal Relations, which is a continuation of a waiver, so that it can be counted as a health credit. And then two of them, the reason we're bringing it forth this evening, are two of our new project lead the way courses, our biomedical engineering and our human body systems. Both of those, if we are approved by the waiver, we can receive CTE funding for our students. And the CTE funding, first it has to go through, it has to be approved by you, and then it has to be approved by DOE. And the paperwork to do the CTE funding is July 1st. So we wanted to be timely, so that we did not miss out on this opportunity to receive that extra funding for those two courses.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Make it a motion on the table to approve applying for these course waivers.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Kathy? Okay. Tricia? Tricia, Tricia, second?
Not me.
No.
I was the only one.
Okay, Kathy, we're going with Kathy. Discussion?
I just have one question. When will we know if the waivers have been accepted from DOE?
We should know as soon as we're able to turn them in. They usually turn those around fairly quickly, so that then we can turn around the paperwork for the CTE funding.
Yeah, because you said that they have to be, that's due July 1st.
Correct.
So that's got to be a quick turnaround.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's why we didn't wait until the June 27th meeting.
Any other questions? All in favor of supporting the waivers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have our District Technology Committee recommendations. Dr. Wall.
Very excited to have the presentation by the members of the District Technology Committee and their recommendations this evening. Under Ann Arroyo's leadership, they have covered a lot of best practice ground and vetted this with stakeholder groups, administrative leadership team, and we're very excited to be a part of this process tonight, Ann. I'll let you take it from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to invite you to come on down. We'll start here, even though we won't get to the activity until a little later in the presentation. So if you want to come on down, and then we'll get started. And you have envelopes at your table. You're going to have to resist the temptation to go into them right now. Just push them to the side until our little activity later.
So on behalf of the Technology Integration Committee, we are very excited to be here tonight to share with you our recommendations for moving forward with a three-year action plan for technology integration in Carmel Clay Schools, which also includes a recommendation for how we should move forward as a district with device selection and looking at a strategy for management of devices. So tonight, we're going to talk, we're going to have members of our committee. So we had a great, I mean, this was a phenomenal committee that worked with us, a very broad-based committee. You can see we have representation from early childhood all the way up to high school level. We had classroom teachers on this committee, instructional coaches, special education teachers, media specialists, department chairs, assistant principals, principals. We even had the district's assistive technology coordinator, and also Kristy Cloud, our director of technology, was also a vital member of this committee. So it was an amazing committee. We brought three committee representatives with us tonight. We have Shirley Morton, fourth grade teacher from Mohawk Trails. Oh, Kate already left. She's got work to do. She had to run. You could tell she was ready to go. Shirley also serves an interesting role for this committee. She's also a building technology coordinator, which is a stipend position for a teacher in each of our buildings. And she'll be sharing with us, in addition to the plan for technology integration, but also the work that that group of teachers, what we called our LMS leaders, who are our technology coordinators, and their work with moving forward with an LMS in our district. So Shirley will actually be sharing some of that with us tonight as well. Then we have Jackie Callahan, who's from Woodbrook Elementary. She'll be a third grade teacher next year. She previously is top fourth grade. And then Paige Weir, who is a CHS math teacher. So we have some nice representation from our committee. They're going to share pieces of the plan with you tonight. So tonight's agenda, we're going to first talk about how this all fits with the vision of the strategic plan the school board that was set forth through our work last year. We're going to talk very specifically about the vision for technology in this district, which is a really vital piece for developing a plan and how we would move forward as a district. The piece that everybody is dying to know about is our mobile device strategy. So I think you'll be really excited to see what we've come up with as a committee for that work, and the recommendations for how we're going to get started for this school year, right away in the fall. Then we're going to talk a little bit about the LMS selection process and what our recommendations are for an LMS, and then get into the big picture overview of the next three years. What's it going to look like for technology integration in our district? So let's talk a little bit about the strategic plan. I know you know this piece very well, but with our committee, and also tonight, we always wanted to go back to the strategic plan for the district. Why were we doing this in the first place? And we want to make sure everybody knew every single thing that we did was grounded in this vision, being student-centered and then looking at our strategic goals and objectives. This became our touchstone for our work all throughout the year. The committee met monthly, just about every month this school year, and we always kept back, going back to the strategic goals, the vision and the mission of Carmel Clay Schools. It was really important for us to keep doing this, so that we reminded ourselves why we were doing this. And so when we look at our strategic goals and objectives, you can see in student learning, number three, integrate technology to support student learning. So one of our priorities in terms of strategic goals. And then when we looked at the stakeholder vision for the future, when ECR came and did their stakeholder surveys with all the people in the committee, they prioritized what were the items that if in 10 years from now, what would our teachers, our students, our parents hope to see in Carmel Clay Schools in 10 years? And then those items were prioritized. Technology was top priority for student learning, and you can see that our stakeholders hoped to be able to see in 10 years, students learning to use technology in a safe, responsible, and productive manner. Technical support needed to maintain our infrastructure and hardware, that the district was providing technology necessary to ensure consistent access and usage. Professional development that is needed is provided to use technology to support student learning, and that we would use technology as a way to support individualized and innovative instructional practices. So again, this became much of the backbone of our work in moving forward in creation of this plan. We look at the board's strategic plan, action plan, our top two objectives for 2015-16 were the development of the plan, as well as selecting one learning management system for the district, and we're going to be talking about that more tonight. And that was a separate committee, again, that did, not a committee, we had a group of teachers helping inform that process, and over 300 beta testers in the district who volunteered to help inform that process as well. So we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Okay, so I'm going to pass it off to Jackie, who's going to talk about the work of the committee and give you some background on that.
Thank you. As Ann said, the Technology Integration Committee was comprised of 30 educators, and we met monthly over the course of a year. And we spent most of that time reading and research and standards and analyzing data. And this work served as a common language and the foundations for the committee to move forward into the decision-making about the device strategies and the next steps in which we engaged into the process of interest-based problem solving. Through the interest-based problem-solving process, we were able to come up with a consensus on a plan that supported what the research base was and met everyone's interests. So we have the technology, the communication, the device strategy, the infrastructure, and our personal development. While doing this, one of the reoccurring themes that we had was that we learned that research was about the stakeholders. The teachers, the administrators, the parents, the students must understand the why, or the moral imperative for our district to invest time, money, and energy in this work. If everyone is not on the same page as to why this technology integration and innovation is important, it risks ending up being just another artifact in the educational integration innovative graveyard. So meaningful technology integration can no longer just be an optional activity. It needs to become ingrained in our culture. Ensuring that all stakeholders know and understand our why will be critical to the success of this plan. The committee started this work coming to consensus on the key words and ideas that we wanted to reinforce. These key words were then regrouped into three categories: student-centered, essential skills, and future-ready. We also wanted to make sure that the vision was couched within the district's vision and mission. Carmel Clay Schools will provide opportunities, experience excellence. This work, however, is not yet done. We really want this to be part of a brand for Carmel Clay Schools and easy for all to understand and remember. Our committee will continue into next year, and one of our goals will be to help develop this brand, complete with a logo and tagline. We would like to engage the community in this process as well, possibly having a district-wide competition for students and families to submit ideas. Not only would this help develop the brand, it would serve as a dual purpose of educating and the community of our why. Additionally, we want this work in our current vision, mission, and student-centered model and graphic.
Okay, so, once we've kind of got our mind wrapped around why we were doing what we're doing and making sure that what we were doing was research-based, was at the interest of our stakeholders, was meeting our vision within our strategic plan, we had to start talking about devices. And that was a bit of a scary conversation. At one point, we asked everybody in the room to write down what they thought we should do as a district, just based on everything we had talked about. And we had 30 people in the room, we probably had 30 different plans. So we went round and round, we went through the interest-based problem-solving process, and we were able to come to what I think is a really workable plan. But trying to find that right fit took us some time. And one of the things that we'd like to do with you this evening, to help you understand what our plan is, is instead of talking about devices right now, which is at everybody's, you know, heart, you have things that you love and that you prefer when it comes to devices, and you probably have your own idea of what we should do, let's take devices out of the equation right now, and let's talk about something everybody knows and loves, and that is shoes. So we're going to just forget about devices for a moment, and we're going to talk about shoes. So just as we did with technology, and what all the research would tell us that we need to do before you get into this work, is you need to all know what your why is. What is your moral imperative? So let's talk for a minute. Why do we wear shoes? Okay, protect your feet. What else?
Your hands for gray.
Okay. For fashion's sake, right? Because we want to be fashionable. We don't want to look sloppily dressed. What else?
To support your fashion.
Support, to provide support to you. Mm-hmm. How about?
Keep you warm.
Absolutely. We want to protect our feet. Traction, right? If you're outside and somewhere slippery, you want to have some traction. You want support. Keep your feet warm or cool, depending on the season. We'd like to be able to add to our style. How about because we want to be able to go places in public? The social norm is, for the most part, in most places in this country, you need to wear shoes in order to enter public spaces. No shoes, no shirt, no service, right? So these are reasons, these are our whys, for why we wear shoes. Would we all agree that wearing shoes is an important part to our everyday lives? Yeah, everybody feels good about that? So we're going to do a little game tonight, and you have an envelope in front of you, which, let me give you the directions first. So this game is called "If the Shoe Fits." So you are going to work in a group of four or five, and you have a table sign to show you who's in your group. Everyone is going to take an envelope. Your envelope is your closet. You're going to take out your playing cards, but you're not going to share with the people that you're playing against your cards. You're going to keep those to yourself. What's in your playing cards represent the shoes that you have in your closet. I'm going to give you a series of questions, and you are going to play the card on the table that you feel best answers the question. At the end of the question, you're going to pick your card up, return it to your hand, and at each turn, you must play a card. So you cannot refrain from playing a card. Okay? So keep your hands to yourself, take out your deck of cards. All right. Everybody know who you're playing with? Okay, so my first question for you. What shoes would you wear if you are playing basketball at a charity event at Bankers Life Fieldhouse?
Face up or face down?
Face up.
I have.
You have to play one. Keep your hands to yourselves. Okay, so go ahead. Everybody play a card. Do we need to go back to the rules? Okay, everybody play a card. Okay, pick your card up and put it back in your deck, your hand. Okay, next question. What shoes would you wear if you're playing a pickup game of basketball in your driveway? Kathy does not look happy with her hand. Okay. Okay, pick up your card, put it back in your hand. Next question. What shoes would you wear if you are running in the mini marathon?
You definitely stand.
Okay, pick your card up, put it back in your hand. What shoes would you wear if you are going to a wedding?
I would find it dressable.
Okay, pick up your card, place it back into your hand. What shoes would you wear if you are working in a garden? Yay!
Actually, I would too.
Okay, pick your card up, put it back in your hand. What shoes would you wear if you're going to the Carmel Farmers Market? Okay. Pick up your card, put it back in your hand. I think I have one more for you. What shoes would you wear if you are going to the beach? Okay. Pick your cards up. You can put your cards back in your envelope. Game is over. Thank you for playing. Let's talk, we'll talk about that game for a minute and do a little reflection. Okay, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. I'm going to ask you to process with the team that you played with, and then I'll ask for somebody to share out their thinking, or I'll try to listen in and rephrase what you shared. So our first question, thinking about shoes, this one, let's talk about together. Do you remember what our why was? Why do we wear shoes? We talked about protection, providing traction, for fashion reasons, we wanted it to complement our style, no shoes, no shirt, no service. What was the other one you said? Support. Okay. Thinking about the shoes in your deck, did all of those shoes match our why? Did they meet our criteria? Not all, did they? Which ones did not meet our why?
Well, the rain boots.
Mm-hmm.
In some situations, we provide safety protection.
So, right, they didn't provide a lot, they didn't meet the criteria of a lot of our why. Some of them, maybe. Pam, what were you sharing?
Rain boots.
The rain boots. Why didn't the rain boots meet your why? They provide support, traction.
If they did not provide support, it would be hot at the beach, but you wouldn't be wet.
That's true.
Yes, I wouldn't wear rainy weather.
Are they the style that you would choose to wear every time? Not necessarily. So having only that one option didn't necessarily fit all of our whys when we looked at them. Close, maybe some of them, not all. Okay, so talk about, for those of you who had a limited selection of shoes, some of you had only rain boots available, some of you only had bare feet or LeBrons and some Chuck Taylors. Talk about with your group, how did it feel to have that limited selection?
I had once had blackage during this one.
Parent rain boots, and that's all. It was a really good brand.
I felt a little cut off.
So let's come back together. I saw a lot of emotion in that conversation and throughout the game. For those of you who had a limited selection, what were some things you talked about? How did it feel? Kathy?
I felt kind of left out.
So everybody else had the cool or the fashionable choices and got to make a choice, and you had to use the one that was handed to you.
Mine was not multifunctional.
Okay, so it only really provided, it was a tool for one type of job. You had the rain boots?
Yes.
Pam, I know you were kind of frustrated throughout the game. How did it feel for you to have a limited selection?
I mean, it was kind of silly to be playing the game, because all I could put out was a rain boot. Every time you asked a question, it was the same thing, rain boots.
So kind of frustrating, though.
I felt poor.
And maybe like, yeah, like you didn't have the same choices or options as everybody. Let's talk about those who had the variety. I know, I think, Dr. Wall, you had the full closet. Dr. Dudley, you had a full closet.
I think the decks were nicer.
I don't know how I know that, but I was just guessing.
Very, very comfortable. No stress.
Dr. Dudley, how did it feel for you?
Get the right tools for whatever occasion.
You seemed very happy playing over there. You seemed to be very comfortable. For most of us, our closet isn't limited just to one pair of shoes. So why do we have a variety? Let's just think about that. We have a variety because, and some of you talked about this, we have different shoes for different jobs. We don't want to have to wear rain boots for every occasion, but rain boots are nice to have when it's a rainy day or you're working the garden. I think for Dr. Wall and Dr. Dudley, that idea of having choice felt pretty good. Felt like you had a voice and some choice in that process. For some of us, comfort. For those who had the Chuck Taylors and the LeBrons, you might have picked, some people might have said I'd go with the LeBrons, or I'd go with, you know, a loafer of some kind to the wedding, but some might have said Chuck Taylor is perfect for me. That's very comfortable, I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to wear that. Also, we like to all have, I'm sure, the most up-to-date, current, advanced shoe. So our closets are ever-evolving, for most of us. Maybe not everybody. But we like to kind of keep up with fashion, and that's why we have, you know, closets full of shoes often, because we want to have the newest or the most advanced in terms of technology for our shoes. So that seems like a kind of a silly analogy to talk about shoes when we're really here to talk about devices tonight. But there's a reason why we are framing our thinking around this idea of shoes, and that's to help us understand some of the decisions we made as a committee about what we wanted to recommend and what was going to be best for our teachers and students moving forward. So when we think about shoes, and we think about the idea that we don't limit ourselves to one pair of shoes, let's put on the hat of what about devices? We don't typically anymore, the trend is not that you have one device and that is your device, and that's the only device you use. In my work, in my desk, I have multiple devices out. Most of them are my personal devices, but I work with three devices out, an iPad, my iPhone, and then my computer with three screens out at my desk, and I work between those three devices in multiple projects all day long. That is what our kids are experiencing, and that is what we're going to see more and more. Just having one device doesn't always fit the job, that we have more jobs to do and certain devices fit better. One thing that I think is interesting is that we like to have shoes that are up-to-date and in style for most of us. Let's think about technology in our district. We have a lot of students who go home, and they're early adopting families, so they have the greatest, the newest, the best device at home, and they have access to the most up-to-date technologies. I shared with our group when we met last time, I will never forget when the new iPhone came out, the larger one, the 6S, 6E, 6S+, something like that. It had not even been out for a day, and I was in one of our buildings, and some students were doing a presentation, and this student, sixth grader, pulled it right out of his pocket. He already had it. And I was so jealous that day. But, I mean, the reality is, many of our students, not all, but many, are always going to have the newest up-to-date technologies. That's just the nature of technology. There are always going to be early adopters. If we think about the LeBron shoes, for example, the LeBron shoes that you had, those were the basketball shoes that you had, and some of your closets are up-to-date, the newest, the coolest, the greatest basketball shoes there are. What if we gave those LeBron shoes to everybody in our district, and then said, you're going to have those LeBron shoes for the next six years? In two years, the kids who are on the travel basketball team have the newest technology 3D-printed shoes that are custom-designed for their feet. So when they leave school every day, those are actually coming out. Yes, they are. They're already here. So when they go home and they go on their travel team or play with their friends, they're going to be putting on their 3D-printed shoes. And then they're going to go back to school, and is the gym teacher going to say to them, "I'm sorry, you can't wear those today. You have to put on the LeBrons that we gave you." You have to put on the LeBrons that we gave you two years ago." You know, it's not a big deal, but is that what, if we have the best at home or if we have the newest, is that what they're going to want to wear? Are they gonna want to use that? And this thing is true with technology. Technology is changing very quickly. So a question our committee was constantly looking back at was how do we provide a device that's not stagnant for our kids in a year, two years? Technology is changing so quickly for us. We talked a little bit about this. When we look at shoes, we do have shoes that we buy to specialize for certain tasks. The same is really true for technology. There are certain devices, there are certain things, like an iPad, for example, or any Apple product, if you're going to do media and work in video or audio or in production, that's probably gonna be a better tool than others. And so we want to look and start thinking about not just, "I like the iPad," but why is that a better device for the type of task that I'm using? Some of you had bare feet that you were able to use and when we talk about shoes, you know, shoes are social norm, but sometimes no shoes are the best shoe to wear at the time. So if you're going to the beach or if you're home relaxing, it's okay not to have shoes on. The same is true for devices in the classroom. When we're talking about devices, sometimes it's okay. We're not saying that teachers have to be using technology every single moment of the day. Teachers have choice in that process to decide, when is it best, when is technology really gonna amplify our learning here today? And sometimes that's going to be technology, sometimes it's not going to be. But one caveat to that is that, like shoes and wearing shoes in public, the social norm is wearing shoes for the most part. And technology, when we look at how we're operating in our community and our society today, there are very few people who are operating without a phone in their pocket or a device. And if we really want to prepare students for college and careers, we have to start helping them move beyond seeing technology just as, you know, a game to play at night or a way to set up a playdate with your friends. There's more to technology that we can leverage in the classroom and we have to help students learn that. Right now, we have a lot of kids with a lot of devices. I would hazard a guess, we have a lot of families who say they're just using them to watch videos and to play or maybe to talk to their friends. We have to help them learn how to use technology for learning and for careers and for college and all that great stuff. We can't just pretend it doesn't exist in our classrooms too. So we really do have to acknowledge the fact that this is part of our society. We can choose to turn our head to it or we can embrace it and really harness it for teaching and learning. So looking at our proposed device strategy, everybody likes to talk about one-to-one and I know when we've talked about this, even in the strategic plan and looking through it, people were saying, "We really need to be one-to-one like everybody else." And that is terminology that we're hearing more and more, but honestly, that terminology is becoming more passe, it's actually quite out of date. So we're not really proposing a one-to-one strategy here. And the reason why we don't like a one-to-one name is because one-to-one really signifies an emphasis on a device, one student, one device. If we look back at our strategic goals, graphic organizer, at the center of that organizer is not an iPad, it is about kids. And talking about technology and the emphasis on calling it a one-to-one plan, although it is semantics, it also communicates, I think, and our committee feels, to our community that we care about devices first and kids second. So while that's just a word, it really helps you understand a little bit about where we're moving forward to. And a lot of research will now say, say, instead of calling it one-to-one, we need to start talking about one-to-world. And how do you look at leveraging devices in order to provide greater access for students to information, greater access to global connections and to communicating with peers? And we know that's a lot of the heart of, at the heart of strong teaching and learning. So I'm gonna pass it off to Paige, who's gonna talk about what we are going to do in this one-to-world initiative. Get us started.
Hello. So the committee has been very committed to reinforcing a critical finding from the research. It's not about the device. It is about leveraging technology to enhance and amplify learning. However, in order to help teachers to do that, we need to be able to, or sorry, we know we need to give them regular access to a mobile tool that would help them start learning how to operate and teach with technology in mind. Research very strongly recommended that you do not put devices in students' hands before you put them in the hands of teachers. So our first course of action was to ensure that all certified staff would have their own device to use. In determining which device to recommend, research supports selecting a device that best fits your teaching and learning task. There is no research that tells us which device would be best. So the committee felt by offering choice, we could learn if there is a particular device that best fits the needs of the teachers at specific levels and in specific content areas. In determining these options, the committee listed all the device options that are currently available, then grouped them by device type, operating system, and other categories. Through this activity, we were able to find three devices that represent three different types and with three different operating systems. The three devices, types are the iPad, the Chromebook, and a Windows convertible tablet. And the three operating systems are iOS, Chrome, and Windows. Do you need me to explain what a convertible laptop is? No? You guys are good? Okay, just checking.
Is that my source?
So after attending a session at their school and being given an opportunity to learn about and explore the three device types, teachers will be allowed to choose which device they would like to use during the 2016-2017 school year. And teachers who want the device right away will be able to use it first semester and teachers who would like to hold back a little bit will be able to select their device during After teachers have received their devices and have had time how to learn how to use them to enhance the student learning in their classroom, we'll then start rolling out at each building and increase access to devices for students. Every school will receive an influx of devices to supplement their current labs and laptop carts as well as to supplement our current BYOD model. The number of devices received will be equal in proportion to the number of students enrolled in each building, with a tentative increase to total approximately a mobile device for every four students. This does not take into account the number of computers and laptops currently in each building. Again, in order to help us learn which best, which device best fits the task, grade, level, and content area, we want to use this opportunity to collect feedback and data. So if a school were to receive 150 total devices, 50 of them would be laptops, 50, sorry, the convertible laptop. 50 of them would be the Chromebook and 50 of them would be the iPad. So the rationale for this device strategy, it may seem counterintuitive to provide three different device types to each building, but it was very intentional on our part. Think of those closets full of shoes. We didn't feel we had the data we needed to support a single device adoption. We needed to engage our teachers and students across the district to learn if there was one device type that we should move towards. Additionally, much of the research would tell you more and more that people are moving towards having multiple types of devices and they, that they interface with every day. And that limiting, it is very limiting to have only one device type. So we wanted to provide opportunity for teachers and students to navigate multiple devices. The committee will continue its work next year and be collecting data to inform our next steps for the device strategy. We did want to provide voice and choice. When teachers have choice and voice in the process, they have greater buy-in for our next steps with the devices as well as for achieving our Y. As you learned in our shoe activity, we like to have a tool that best matches our purpose. So we want to allow them to experiment and provide teachers opportunities to see which device is actually going to work in their classroom for their teaching and for their learners. The LMS, our LMS is very, very robust and is going to require professional development and easy access for teachers and students to be able to plan and instruct with the LMS. Having teacher devices and increased access for students will help with the implementation of our LMS that we are going to adopt. Also, the infrastructure. If we were to throw another 15,000 devices onto our infrastructure right now, it would be very taxing. By adding an influx at each building, we can build our infrastructure capacity in a gradual and controlled manner. Also, teacher capacity. There are lots of logistics with even a small influx of devices for administration, teachers, and students to manage. By starting it this way, we can implement and learning without completely overwhelming people. It will give us enough momentum to get started, but also enough time and space to learn along the way. Last but not least, it is student-centered. We want to be able to have a laser focus on our student-centered learning. By not jumping into a one-to-one or one-to-world model, we can keep focused on what we know is most important.
All right. The tech coordinator can't figure this out. This one? This one? Okay, okay, we're good now. See, everybody's learning, right? This is our tentative timeline for the device rollout for next year. This has already been shared with the district leadership team and we're gonna start in July. The big focus at this point is communication because we want people to understand our Y, our purpose, what's our rationale for doing what we're doing and how we're going to do it. So at the C4 conference, teachers will have an opportunity to get a sneak peek at the plan. They'll have the opportunity to learn about their device options and even have the chance to interact with them so they can start to learn and play a little bit. In August, we'll continue to communicate the plan to all stakeholders and continue to explore the device options. September, early adopters will be allowed to start making their choices and some of us are really eager to already make our decision. We'll continue to roll out devices for the rest of the year, increasing our wireless The LMS committee spent the past year going through this process. We read a lot of research, we learned a lot about what an LMS is. We listened to presentations from Blackboard and the Canvas companies. We selected Canvas for a beta testing. We had 500 teachers sign up to beta test and this was second semester right before spring break. So it was interesting, it was cool that we had so many teachers that were excited to try something new at that point in the year. During that time, they had the opportunity to get face-to-face professional development, online support. We had office hours, they could get the support that they needed to try new things. At the end, we had 327 staff members provide feedback on Canvas and so the LMS committee is recommending that we adopt Canvas as our LMS system for next year. Okay, so this is, the big focus to make this work is gonna have to be professional development. We learned that in research on both committees that I was on. We're gonna have to learn how to use the Canvas tools. We're going to have to focus on how to teach using Canvas because a blended environment is very different than what we're using now. We're gonna need models and strategies to integrate technology into our instruction and curriculum, learning about technology tools and how to use those tools with the devices that we have. And my favorite one is problem-solving when technology doesn't work. Because that's everybody's fear and Ann modeled that really well in all of our committee meetings, there would be something that didn't work and you have to, we have to teach teachers and kids strategies for what to do when it doesn't work. And then a big focus too will be digital citizenship for teachers, for students, and especially for our parents to understand that. This professional development cannot be whole group only because we, our research tells us that's not the best way for teachers to learn. It needs to be job embedded, it needs to be differentiated, it needs to be responsive to the teacher's needs and where they are in their comfort level with using technology. So, is this your part? Sorry. No, no, it's all yours.
So we wanted to give you kind of an overview of what, you've heard a lot about this, but what our plans are for next year specifically and then in general what we want. Our plan would be to continue into 2017, '18 school year and '18 and '19 school year. And obviously, it's going to change. With everything with technology, we've found, as Shirley just mentioned, we're always kind of experiencing things and then having to regroup with Canvas in particular when we were making that selection for Canvas. We had Canvas and Blackboard come in, they presented, we weren't able to make a really strong decision. We had to add another meeting, regroup, and have both come in and we did a head-to-head between both companies and took a whole other day to help make that decision. So we know that this is our kind of next steps foundation, but we also know that this will ebb and flow and change as we learn more and grow. So for next year, as you've heard, our plan for next year is that every teacher will receive a choice of a mobile device that they get to select. Additionally, each school will receive an increase of a variety of devices, so as we talked about, a third of each type of device at their building to, in order to kind of help with professional development, get people started in how we integrate technology. This is also meant to supplement our current BYOD model. That's not necessarily gonna mean that we will keep BYOD forever and ever, but right now, our current plan is BYOD and then these will help support the BYOD piece. We are recommending an adoption for Canvas to start with next school year. We also know that we're gonna need to provide lots of job-embedded professional development for teachers and tech integration. So how do you do it and make it part of your curriculum? The digital citizenship piece and management is critical, all the different technology tools that you can start to integrate and then obviously Canvas. One piece I do want to mention, we have our C4 conference on July 13th, one month from today. We're gearing up. We have over 500 people currently signed up. I think we have 540 people as of tonight signed up for C4. I welcome all of you to come and visit us on that day. The keynote will be starting at nine o'clock. So we'll have keynote first and then we'll have four breakout sessions with taught by teachers within the district and also some teachers coming from outside the district to present. We just have a really great day planned, I'm really excited about. So I welcome all of you to come on that day. We need to continue to improve our infrastructure and wireless and as I think Paige mentioned, we're gonna, the purpose of not throwing all these devices onto our system at once is partially so that we can make sure that the devices we do put into the, into our system, our ecosystem, are going to work and work well, so people aren't frustrated. So we're gonna continue to work on that piece with our tech team. We want to engage everybody in our community in branding this vision. We had our Y, our moral imperative, but it still is pretty wordy. We kind of, those were the key words and concepts. Most places will say you need to have a brand, a logo, kind of a very succinct vision that everybody can repeat and know, students, parents, and teachers alike. So we want to engage our community in helping us develop that and select that. We talked a lot about communication, that is gonna be key. Before we put a device in anybody's hands, we want to make sure everybody understands why we are doing what we are doing. Because it may seem kind of strange that we're letting them choose between three devices and then there are three different devices in the schools. There's a reason for that. We want to make sure everybody understands what that is before we get started. And that ongoing communication is gonna be critical. The committee, the committee is going to continue into next year. We just scratched the surface. We kept saying this whole thing is like an onion. You peel back one layer of that onion and there's lots more under each, each thing you do has lots of different implications and next steps. So we want to continue that work of the committee. One thing we'd like the committee to do is also work with our ALT team to conduct some site visits to schools with similar demographics to Carmel Clay Schools but have a technology plan and vision kind of already in place to learn from other districts similar to us. And then finally, we'd like to hire an additional district technology specialist. We have one person on staff currently that is kind of like the trainer for our district and bringing on one more person to help be our trainers, really to our coaches who are gonna do that job-embedded professional development and continue to support the work of administrators, teachers, and our coaches in the classroom is gonna be critical. When we look at 2017, 2018, When we look at two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, we're going to continue with this rollout. Again, we're collecting feedback next year on what we need, what we should be doing, what tools are working. We may find that all the tools work just great, and that will inform what we do next. We may find iPads in grades K one, two are the best things since sliced bread, and we want to go with iPads. So we're going to continue to collect feedback from teachers and students to learn about what's working and how's it working, and then that will help inform what we decide to do next in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. The PD is, you know, that's going to be the key to everything. We're just going to have to continue to provide a lot of differentiated professional development. We have lots of different levels of comfort and success with technology, and we need to make sure we're supporting all of our teachers at all the levels. Continue improvement to the infrastructure and wireless, working with our stakeholders to make sure we're communicating that plan and vision, and then continuing to get that feedback on our device fit. And then much of the same in two thousand eighteen, nineteen. So it's that continual device strategy rollout, PD, infrastructure, and communication are just going to be the heart of what we do for the next three years. So, I love this quote. I think I used it with you in our first meeting when we first started talking about the tech plan this year. Never mistake a clear view for a short distance. We have everything nicely put into little infographics, and it all looks really great on paper, but there's a lot of work to do ahead. It's, it's definitely, we're going to have lots of excitement, but there's going to be challenges along the way, I'm sure, that we will all work with and grow with. So just to keep in mind, we're getting started. It's a huge and exciting time for us, but we know that there's going to be a lot of work for all people involved in getting this off the ground and successful. So thank you for letting us share with you tonight, and thank you to my committee members for coming on this lovely summer day to come and present after school's out. May I, are there any questions that you would like us to address? Kathy?
Does Canvas have, does Canvas have available to it, would it like modules for training within, built in? Because I know when I was using Moodle and Blackboard at Butler, we could just click on the training side and do it at our own time.
They have a wealth of resources online where you can, you can find different guides, and they're not, you know, long, multi-page books of information. You can literally search within their Canvas guides and find specific information for what you need. They do have webinars and things that are accessible to our users. We have found in the beta testing, many of our teachers really don't like to do the webinars because what's interesting with Canvas is you're going to interact with the Canvas in the way that you want to set up your course, and there's lots of different ways that you can set up Canvas. So to try to find a one manual or one webinar that's going to fit all your needs is tricky. So we have tech tips that we are developing. We've had specific little modules that we've been sending out to teachers who have been part of our beta. We're doing a lot of that work here and sometimes repackaging the work that's been created online from Canvas.
Yeah, my question, and it might be something that will be addressed later, but in a number of the professional development courses and classes that we've taken as a board, the most important thing that they were pointing out to us is that you need to have curriculum that uses a device. Just having the device isn't really going to support learning. You're teaching in an entirely different mode. So does Canvas support that, or what are, how are we integrating new curriculum? And where, talk, if you could just.
Sure. When we look at curriculum, there are some places that would say the best thing you can do is buy a curricular product to help use that technology tool for teaching and learning. That's what many salespeople would have you believe. The research would tell you that it is really about the teacher knowing their craft and knowing what the standards are and what they need to teach, and then figuring out the tool. Typically, the tools that you can find, many of them are free. There are Web 2.0 tools that you can access through a browser, knowing which tools are going to interface with their lesson best to amplify that. And our professional development will really be centered around that. So making sure we're doing PD not to, here's a K-12 audience, but here's second grade or our primary teachers doing Lucy Cawkins writing. What tools and modeling, not only how to learn how to teach Lucy Cawkins writing, but then what tools are going to help amplify that experience for teachers and students. Canvas will help us with that. Canvas really supports a blended learning model where that you can start providing resources for kids online and for families, but I might have, do some face-to-face work, but then online I might be setting up modules or sharing information with students that they can access in that online environment to increase collaboration and learning around that standard that you're trying to teach. So Canvas becomes a way to communicate, store resources, but also a way to convey teaching and learning, to facilitate that teaching and learning. It provides that common unifying platform for all. Pam?
Yes. I have one thing that I just wanted to make you aware of, which you don't maybe, may know, but NSBA has tech sites that they offer throughout the year where people can go visit and see what the technology is in their, the different school systems, and those are really interesting.
Oh, that would be great, yes.
And also, when the teachers receive the devices, will they already be set up for them? Will they already have certain things on them? Will they be able to add things to the devices? Are the devices going to be basically theirs, or, I know they belong to the school, but will they be able to use them for, I mean, you know, person, something personal, or is it just school?
Well, I mean, I can say that the devices, when we get the devices in, there are management systems that we will use to manage those devices before they get into the teacher's hands. So we will format them to make sure that they're branded with the Carmel Clay School logo and that when they log in, the log-on screen will be the same login that they use for when they log on to computer in Carmel Clay School. So we will be managing the devices, and we will set those devices up here. So it will be like having your school computer that you use every day. It'll be set up in the same way depending on the device, but you can take that device home. That's part, then what you do with it at home, that kind of speaks to the digital citizenship piece that we will continue to work on with teachers. Obviously, you know, if they're on their own network, you could do lots of things, but that's still a personal, that's a device of the school system. So that goes hand in glove with digital citizenship, and that is a school district purchase device, so you need to show digital citizenship when you use that device, whether you're at school or at home.
Okay, so if they're using a specific curriculum that needs, let's say you're using an iPad and it has an app on it that you need for that particular lesson, can you add that, or, I mean, are they going to be allowed to add that?
Yes. Just as we do now with our desktop computers at school, we do not limit teachers from downloading, you know, educational, if there's an educational software piece that they can get free online, there's no restrictions on that currently. The same will be true for an app in an iPad store or in the Windows store. We will have, if there are certain apps that we want everybody to have, let's say, I don't know, Kindle Free Reader, we can, through the management system we have here, we can push that app out to all the devices, but if a teacher says, I also want this special app that I think would be great for teaching and learning in my classroom, they can download that app as well.
Okay. And what is the replacement plan? I don't think we came up with that.
The replacement plan for.
For all these devices that we're rolling out to the teachers and students, they're all being rolled out at different times. So.
What's taking its place?
Currently, we have the five-year replacement plan. So how are we going to, is it still going to be five years, depending on when you get your device, and then five years from then, you'll get a new one?
That piece, when we look at the new devices we're rolling out, we don't have all of that worked out yet because we're still going to be informing the plan for the future of what we want to do, year two, three, and beyond. So this is really a feedback gathering year. The current devices we have in districts are desktops and such. Those will stay. We are not removing anybody's desktop. Everything is staying the same. If you have a five-year-old laptop, if you're somebody that has a laptop and you're ready for replacement, we'll still do the replacement cycle on current laptops. But other than that, we're not removing anything from kind of our ecosystem at the moment. In terms of the devices that we're getting, we don't have a specific strategy for rolling those out because we don't know if all of those devices will stay or will we purpose those in different ways. So that will come as we continue to develop the plan the next year or two.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What if a teacher selects a particular product that really supports most everything they're doing, yet there's this new innovative idea that they've noticed on somebody else's device? Will they be able to borrow a device, or how will they be able to, be able to use a three-in-one?
For the teacher device, we have talked about this as a committee. I'm not sure logistically how it will work out yet, but we do want to be able to provide teachers, if we have a teacher who says midway through the year, they have an iPad, and they said, you know what, I'd love to try a Windows tablet. If we have, as we predict we have, will have, we know we are going to have based on the committee and some of the information the committee shared with us. We think we're going to have teachers who will say, I just need to see it first, see what everybody else is doing, learn first, and feel comfortable before you give me a teacher device. We're not going to let them not get one, but we're going to give them some time to get activated. So we're kind of thinking by second semester, when teachers are starting to, another rollout of teachers are coming on, there might be some places where we can swap devices out. We're not sure yet of that logistic. We'd like to be able to offer that to teachers, though, if we're able to make it work.
I have just a couple of questions. One has to do with, first of all, I want to say, great job. You guys have taken a huge topic.
Thank you.
Huge topic, sorry.
The committee was amazing.
Got my technology here, and pulled it together, but it sounds like you can even tell that there's so much more to do. So my, my first question had to do with three different choices, once it gets to the school part of it all. A third iPad, a third Chromebook, a third the convertible tablet, give or take, and that to be equal to proportion of school-student enrollment.
Correct.
So just a thought that went through my mind as I was preparing for this meeting, and I wondered if the committee had jostled with this, too. We've had a few years now with BYOD, and I'm sure data or information on which schools' students tend to bring more or less of their own devices and things like that. Did any thought go into dividing that proportion up based on devices that are coming from home, you know, and supplementing in that proportion, or did the committee talk about that at all?
It's kind of hard to, to get the information on who's bringing what when, when it comes to BYOD. So that's harder information. We know that kids are bringing devices. If you look at when the wireless is being used throughout the day, you can see there are more devices connecting to our wireless than we have teachers. But what devices students are bringing is the question, and what frequency they're bringing is also the question. So I would say we kind of put the BYOD piece just to the side of that conversation. We knew we wanted, we couldn't say we're not going to BYOD anymore because we weren't going to be able to provide a device for every student, so we would need to support that model. But no, we really didn't grapple with what schools are bringing a lot of this or that because it was honestly all over the board. I would say most people, if I were to guess, it's probably mostly iPads that come in, at least at the elementary level, and possibly, I don't know, Paige, would you say, a variety or?
It's mostly cell phones.
It's mostly cell phones.
And a lot of Chromebooks.
Now Shirley at the elementary says she has a lot of Chromebooks, so.
And a mixture.
And Jackie has a mixture. We do have, I would say, the one overwhelming comment from the committee was we have a lot of kids whose BYOD is phone, are phones. And it's, that's a tricky question because students can do a lot of work on a phone. They can prob, they're pretty proficient on it. There are probably many kids who can type a whole paper on a phone with annotations. But that is a tougher, that piece in having saying phones is enough was not something that our stakeholder group within the committee felt was enough, that we needed to have, you know, a more visible device where we could, we could also see what the students are doing and that just had a little bit greater functionality.
So that almost sounds like that's possibly part of this whole data collecting, information collecting piece where you see how that all falls out and if it needs to be tweaked. Because obviously, I'm thinking of those schools where there's a lot of support from home in the technology kind of ways, and some schools where there's not, and so how do we play with that part of us?
Absolutely, correct.
And then my other main question really was cost. Did the committee put any kind of dollar amount, or were they seeing like an added staff member, infrastructure, the maintenance, the replacement, and things like that?
We did not do that work as a committee. We were charged really with coming up with the plan. Now, I will tell you, when we did the, when we got into the phase where we were coming up with the actual action plan through interest-based problem solving, we said that it had to, whatever our plan was, our design that we came up with, it had to coincide and meet the expectations that we read about in research. It had to meet the needs of the stakeholder group. So we went through the interests of our stakeholders, listed those, and we had to make sure that it met the needs of our stakeholders and our strategic plan. And the third piece was our variable that we didn't have control over, which was what I call feasibility. Can we afford to do this? Now, I was working kind of in the background with technology, with Dr. Dudley and Roger, and making sure that, you know, is this going to work as we start to do this? So we were able to kind of put together a skeleton of a plan and then bring it. Kristi Cloud and I both worked and brought it to Mr. McMichael, who then helped us kind of determine if we could actually do that, if that would be feasible.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. One thing, that's a great point. One thing that we talked about that we also want to build, and I don't think we have it articulated in this plan, that we know we're going to need to do. Shirley talked about that whole problem solving and troubleshooting. One of the things that's really a challenge right now with our current devices that we use is when there is a problem and you're in the middle of teaching and learning and it's not working, what do you do? Now, I can submit a ticket to Kayako, formerly SchoolDude, and our tech team turns that around super fast, but what they can do is within twenty-four hours. That's a really amazing return time, but when you're teaching, that doesn't work for you. When you're in the middle of a lesson, that's, you know, you need instant, and we can't get, you know, have a person in there to troubleshoot any second that you have a problem. So we talked about for professional development, some of it is going to be providing some really simple professional development for our teachers, what to do when things don't work. First, you know, check and make sure the wireless access point is turned on. That often solves the problem. That's usually our number one problem. With Canvas, I can tell you right now, the problem will be, did you publish your course? And if you don't click that little publish button, that's why it doesn't go through. But the other piece of that, that we'd like to start growing and developing, is having kind of student tech teams embedded within the building where we provide some training for our students, elementary through high school, where they can be available when troubles arise in the classroom and leveraging, because, you know, I'm sure you already know, kids can figure just about anything out when it comes to technology. If it's going to get them on that device, they will find a way to get on it, and they can help adults often in that area. So that's a piece we do want to grow as a district, and there are many places, high schools, that have really formalized ways at the high school level to even get that off the ground and running. Thank you.
Pam brought this up, I know, the repair and replacement, but will there be an agreement? I mean, when we give these devices to the teachers, we'll have some kind of repair warranty plan, I'm sure, right? And the other question is, you were talking about the student, the student ones we're going to get for student use, will they stay in the building?
Yes. These are not.
So they could be sets that people could use in and out?
Correct. We're not sending these home, or allowing students to take these home at the moment. Right now, our plan is, we're actually looking at, this kind of goes along with, you know, forms follows function, sometimes where function follows form, but even in the way that we package the devices for the buildings, making it really easily accessible, but not saying, here's one cart for your building of fifty Chromebooks and fifty iPads. Buying carts that will, say, for a grade level, here's fifteen of each of the things, and here are three different carts, so I can pick up this little container that has all the devices ready and bring it right to my classroom and make it really easily accessible, movable. And also, not providing thirty devices. We want to kind of switch the script a little bit for teachers where we have thirty kids all in a device working and sometimes just researching and doing work independently, that sometimes that's okay, but technology is really great for leveraging collaboration. So you don't really always need to have every student with a device. Sometimes one device for four students is best and better, and is going to lead to better learning and better communication. We don't want to see kids just hiding behind computer screens all day. So part of that will be how we package them for the schools, but they won't be going, the student devices will not be going home. We also, one of the big pieces from the committee was that these devices be left alone during testing seasons. So they are not a part of the, we lose a lot of labs, we lose laptops when testing comes around, which now is a year-long adventure in most schools. So these will be outside of the realm of testing. So when testing comes, technology doesn't have to shut down for teaching and learning in the classroom.
So I mean, I think you answered one of my questions. I assume the teacher will have a choice that they want to bring the cart of this device in for this lesson.
Yes.
And then tomorrow, they may want to bring in the next cart. And then tomorrow they may want to bring in the next cart, okay?
And they may even want to say, I want a little bit of all of them and maybe have some kids on iPads, some kids on Chromebooks, and some kids on tablets and that's okay too.
Okay. I mean, and then the one piece that I haven't heard anything about and I'm assuming it's one of the reasons we're moving electronically is textbooks and moving to electronic textbooks and phasing out, carrying around the big?
The big history textbook?
Yes.
That I think is something that will gradually grow and change as we continue with textbook adoptions. For instance, we just did social studies textbook adoption last year and we weren't able to say we're only going to go with an e-text. We had to get both. Now I will tell you, you think you're making a savings on the e-text, you are typically not. They are as expensive if, if not more than the hardback text, these, because of all the publishing that goes in, the development of those texts. So I think as we continue to grow, the adoption of e-text will continue to be a question and something that we'll explore further.
Okay. I mean, I'm just thinking about my kid that complains that they're bringing home?
Yes.
This book and walking around the high school?
We had, yes. Some of our feedback when we did our five-star data and surveys with focus groups and students, that was, for our secondary students, that was an overwhelming comment from many of our student focus groups was, we need to start moving to more digital platforms for paper, but also for textbooks to make that piece more manageable and they're just day-to-day Any other questions?
Well, Anne, and Jackie, and Shirley.
And Paige.
And Paige, thank you for everybody's names. Thank you for such a comprehensive of you. I know we have been very excited and anxious to see this move forward that has been a, we tasked Dr. Wall with technology when he came on board a few years ago and it's really exciting to see this come to fruition. And I thank you for your continued work because this is not over. And have a great summer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.